So call this meeting, another committee of the whole tour. Hello, everyone, please rise from the pitch.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we will.
Justice, uh, Justice Caspero. Justice Brouwer, present.
Justice Brouwer.
Here.
Pressure for you on?
Here.
Like, I could surprise the supervisor.
Here. Thank you. Sure, the Justice Caspero. Okay. Um, like, we have the agenda before us.
So moved.
As the movement's important to approve, the agenda is presented. I would remember, please say aye.
Aye.
I'm opposed to a name. Oh, she carries public comment, public comment. She can't see no one here from the public. We'll continue down the main street for.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. I'll keep it fairly brief tonight. Um, just a couple of things. Uh, most of you have probably seen, we have extended the drop off site at um, Players Club for another two weeks. Uh, so I just appreciate Marcus and his crew managing that. That is a lot of work, having a couple of people out there to um, man that site. Um, so we'll keep uh, uh, a watch on that. Um, also, we started, had a couple of focus groups today. One, one stakeholder meeting for our um, non-moderized um, uh, plan updates. Uh, that went real well. Stakeholder meeting with M.D. CADA, um, Eaton County Road Commission, uh, several other agencies. Um, and then another with uh, uh, Friends of the Lansing Regional Trails. Um, so I think those went well. We uh, got some very good input. Um, another project, our Carrier Creek Project. You may have noticed there's some social media activity. So we continue to work hard at that project. We've got some challenges. I know there's some, some frustration with St. Joe still being shut down. But we have had uh, several challenges in that very large project. Um, the main one being that we've uh, had uh, to do peer supports for the pipe because of the bad soils. And even though we did quite a few soil borings and um, uh, kind of muck testing, um, as we got into the project and opened up the ground and ran into other bad soils. So we've had, so putting in those pilings, you can only do roughly uh, thirty-two feet of pipe insulation a day. Uh, with something that large. So our engineering and um, uh, uh, utilities department continually monitor that and trying to push it. Uh, but that, uh, I keep saying, the positive thing is that that project would have been um, very miserable to deal with in an emergency situation. So we're very fortunate that we were able to be in front of it. Uh, I know it's an inconvenience, one of our major thoroughfares, but uh, um, can, if you get calls, tell people to have patience. It's probably another month or so, um, until we can.
I was gonna say, is it, it was originally supposed to go through the end of September? So are we maybe a week behind, ten days behind us all?
We, they, we incorporated a forty-five day extension. We don't believe they're gonna be probably closer to thirty days. But I, I can see it going all of, into, into October.
Well, we might want to say something on our side because I think the general public, the social media that I looked at anticipating that it's by the middle of September, the end of September, when it's gonna be completed.
So, yeah, because it's always been the end of September. Remember, that's what we've consistently told people that call. So. Brian, does that project, is, does that extend over onto Canal and um, Glint here? There's a, I live on Glint here and there is a road closed sign, big structure on my street. It's been there, I mean, a couple of weeks, pretty close to a couple of weeks, but there's been no, nothing, no activity there.
Yeah, it, it does not extend there, but I, that sign.
It's, it's, it's the road commission. And that's my adjacent neighborhood. The road commission has those streets.
Oh, they're doing their, on the list, okay.
Not that we would know that.
No. It's actually on the list that they gave us several months ago. I just didn't glance, you know, I didn't think anything. The street looks fine. But I, I had to call about it too, so.
So we did, and we do have some signs in other close by neighborhoods that prevent the cut through traffic.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Um, last but not least, something I have not had a chance to be able to put out to the uh, um, our employees yet, but we uh, did search process for new engineer to take the place of Ernie and uh, selected Jake Kleinhans, who was our senior engineer um, under Ernie. So um, he will be our engineering director moving forward, so. Okay.
Congratulations. So now we're hiring his replacement?
So, um, and that's all I have. I'm happy to answer any other questions.
Any other questions? Yeah, Brian, what's the status on the uh, wall that collapsed, Destiny J's?
So, um, as it stands right now, we did issue a demand letter to have the wall taken down or provide an engineering study, structural engineering study, which uh, one of the parties in the lawsuits, the lawsuit is still ongoing. There's still appeals. Uh, there's not really a lot of update every time there's something decided. There's another appeal, so it's, the ownership still remains a little bit in no man's land. Uh, but we did.
Very much in no man's land. So, so the parties want to hold it, but they don't want to hold it when it comes to responsibility of the wall.
Right. So, uh, so we're in the process of trying to get it cleaned up. The structural engineering report says uh, most of it is still in good shape, but there is still a section that is standing that needs to be removed, that was bent or twisted in the storm. Um, I checked, we checked earlier, it has not been cleaned up yet, so we, we are working on that.
Yeah, and also, you know, a perimeter fence, you know, because the wall knocked down the fence. And of course, the fence was, wasn't obscure in the first place. Anybody could have walked in there, so.
We have, we have put, we have put those demands out along with punch list items, uh, some unpaid invoices, um, getting marketplace turned over to the road commission, which had happened yet to both parties. Um, regardless of the, you know, where they're at in the laws, to say these need to be taken care of before anything proceeds.
Yeah, I, you know, for me personally, I just want to make sure it's clear, uh, secure, you know, with a border fence, you know, at the very minimum. But those walls are so tall, they would topple over, you know, past the fence line. A shorter one did, you know, the taller ones are still standing. I don't know how secure they are, but yeah, I think we need to, we need to stay on that. So appreciate your efforts on that.
Yeah, we did, as I said, the structural engineering, independent structural engineering report we received said that they are structurally sound. Whatever reason, the other wall fell in the storm. Obviously wasn't.
It was structurally sound.
All right. You know, the problem is there though, you know, and I understand it. If I was a party in the lawsuit, until I know I have permanent ownership, I'm not gonna spend any money. And neither side has permanent ownership, so neither side can spend any money. So I guess the question becomes, at what point do we have an obligation to make yourself safe? Since they're not gonna act until this gets settled and it's not gonna settle for a long time. We can send them as many letters as we want, but nobody's gonna act.
I, I think we're at that point. Uh, I think we're, we were at a point over the last couple of weeks where we thought there was some clarity and, you know, moving forward. But now it's, there's naemia still, you know.
What options are there?
Well, for us to, for us to take it down and, and, and fence it to secure it and then assess the cost of whoever.
Yes. But we have, there's a process by which we have to do that, to declare it.
A nuisance.
Or dangerous.
Now, is that something that can be done internally or does that take more action?
Actually, I think, I think it can be done internally.
We have a dangerous building. Commission, there's one person.
Doesn't take more than one person. No, I think it's something we should be considering. Thank you for your data.
Anything else for Brian? Barry, you're up. Give something on the election.
Yeah, I just wanted to bring everybody into the loop on um, the impacts of Prop two, of twenty-two, which passed. And there are two key components that affect a broader um, population and certainly affects um, the financial obligations of the township in the sense that, one of them is the nine days of early voting for all state and federal elections with the constitutional option to do it for local elections also. And the second is the permanent automatic ballot list from a single application. So we had an election in May that was township-wide. Everybody in the township got the application where they, where normally it had said, did you want to be on the permanent AV list? The box was for permanent ballot. And um, we are, we had thirteen thousand five hundred people roughly on the permanent application list and fifty-nine hundred of them have moved to permanent ballot list to date and they keep coming in. So um, we will automatically mail for those voters for the November election. This Eaton County recess, so for us, it's Grand Ledge School District. We have four school districts and Grand Ledge is the only one that's in, that's in Eaton's recess. So they will, we'll be mailing out a little over three thousand automatic ballots from there. Um, the nine days of early voting, some key points to it. It was not designed as neighborhood voting and um, it does focus on collaborations and the absence of collaborations will impact funding. The state has been very clear from the beginning, as has the legislature that's been drafting the um, implementation legislation, which has passed, but does not have immediate effect, that um, it is designed for collaborative work.
Can you explain a little more, Mary, how that works on the funding?
Well, the anticipated, but the last thing that we've received is that standalones will um, be looking at possibly forty percent reimbursement for the twenty-four elections.
And is that just for the operational costs of the election center? Or, because you've got to have a pool in place for those nine days. Is that just for the operational costs or does it include? Well, I know some communities have talked, but I've heard some talk and I don't, I'm assuming we're just, I think you've mentioned just using our main room for the township. Um, if there are accommodations in that room needed, physical accommodations to, for that purpose, is there?
If you're talking about that you would need to redo a room to make it, no, there is nothing.
So it's just operational.
Right, it's the execution of nine days of early voting. So, um, in January, I offered to Grand Ledge, Oneida and Windsor because they all, in essence, touched, Grand Ledge doesn't, but it's like two minutes from the um, line. Glen, Glen Ledge declined and wants to do, do a standalone. Oneida was gonna go with the county because there was lots of discussions, several meetings with the county dividing up, would it go into quadrants or what would it do? Um, Oneida was gonna go with the county. Now they're going as a standalone. And Windsor, from the first second it was out of my mouth, said we want to partner. So we have a collaboration which puts our funding at eighty percent. So it's significantly, there is a population threshold. Um, we very possibly would have made the population threshold by ourselves, but there is significant financial um, responsibility to local, small local governments that are going on their own. Um, they've been told it and told it and told it, but I don't think they've processed it. They still believe that pennies from heaven are gonna fall, I think.
What are your hours, Mary, for those?
Well, it, I'll, I'll go through that. You have, you have a whole variety and we are doing a mix. Um, the dates are set. It is nine days for state and federals. It starts two Saturdays before um, the election. And for non-state and federals, like, we are piloting for November as a pilot with the Bureau and we're only gonna do seven days. Chris, I, Chris and I, we all talked and we're gonna do around this community, we're all gonna do the same seven, we're gonna do seven days so that it's all the same. But our hours are, are different. Might give you all the specific ones because we had to turn them in already. Um, we have sixteen precincts with twenty-seven thousand three hundred fourteen voters and Windsor has three precincts with six thousand seventy-six voters. So it's approximately an eighty-two, eighty-two um, an eighteen percent split. So our agreement is that's how we will split any non-funded costs on that percentage basis purely on population. Um, it will require ballot on demand, um, which is um, currently illegal in the state of Michigan, but Senate Bill three sixty-seven, which became a public act, and I can't remember what it is. It's not um, in effect yet because of no immediate effect. But it does allow ballot on demand for early voting only. And it's because of the numerous ballot styles that you get. We have twenty-four ballot styles, um, ourselves. Windsor has six school districts, so they have over, we have over thirty. I think we have thirty-two ballot styles between the two of us. If you did not have ballot on demand, you would have tables with thirty-two different ballot styles out on the table, which could grossly increase the chance of someone getting the wrong ballot. Um, ballot on demand, Hart, which is our election um, equipment provider, has them for about six thousand. Um, and we need, we need two, based on our, our numbers. We could get by, well, they, some people think we need three. I don't want three. I think two is sufficient for what the numbers are likely going to be. Um, we don't need tabulators because we are gonna pull back the number of tabulators we have in our AV counting board because you are moving voters out of AV valve, uh, out of precinct day voting and out of AV voting. So, plus we have spares. Um, so we don't need tabulators or the ADA touch writers. So I argued with the state that I should have ballot on demand provided in lieu of tabulators because for the larger jurisdictions, you're going, they're going to fund at least eighty percent of the tabulator cost. So they're contemplating that. They agree with the logic of it, but we do have money set aside in our equipment fund, but it's really designed for what we need in twenty-eight. So um, we don't want to spend it if we don't have to.
How much are the?
Six thousand. So it'd be twelve thousand, yeah. Um, and then there are, it will require new electronic poll books for that, for the early voting centers because they have to talk to ballot on demand. Um, and what would happen in that case, the voter would come in, they would be um, checked in, scanned in, and then the, their ballot style would come up on the electronic poll book screen. And when the um, person working the, the laptop pushes issue ballot, then it would send a message to the ballot on demand printer. It would print the ballot for the voter that's there at the table. So, um, and then tabulators cannot be used. Early voting tabulators have to be singly used. They can only be used for early voting because they are programmed to not give totals until eight P.M. election day. So you can't use them for AV counting board or for obviously the precinct on election day. Um, and I think I told you the um, percent, how we're gonna split costs based on our populations of registered voters. And um, we are piloting, we're only doing this seven days.
We, what are the seven days, like?
We're starting on Monday the thirtieth.
Okay.
So that they're consecutive. So if we were doing the nine, it would start the Saturday, two Saturdays before. Um, the other, other big issue that we're dealing with, so the November election is reimbursable. So Eaton County Risa will be responsible for all of the cost staffing. Um, we'll use the old E poll book process and actually physically have ballot styles because it's all one issue. It's just simply um, precincts. And we went, we condensed because it's not a state or federal, we can um, go to five thousand voters. And we went from sixteen precincts to four precincts for this election. So you approved that a couple of weeks ago, the precinct consolidation, and it will also be applicable to the early voting center. And Windsor consolidated all of theirs to one precinct. So we, in essence, will have five precincts in the early voting center. Um, the other big issue that we're facing is the presidential primary date and you see tons of issues about that and some fairly unhappy clerks. Um, and that is, it did not get immediate effect. So the legal date for the primary is March twelfth by current election law. But the Bureau is um, setting their calendar based on the February twenty-seventh date. So the only way that it will happen on February twenty-seventh would be if um, this legislature does signee die by the twenty-ninth of November. I'm kind of wishing they would have done signee die in August and gone home. Um, but that didn't happen. So um, that November twenty-ninth would be exactly ninety days. So everybody's planning on it. The difficult and the frustration with clerks is the absolute lack of knowledge or care. And I'm gonna focus on the care. Um, we have to have precincts. We have to have sixteen. We have ten churches that we use and four of our buildings, two of our precincts, two of our facilities have two precincts in them, which we're supposed to tell our churches, can you please hold three days in um, February and three days in March? Because we can't give you a, for certain date. So that's what we're struggling through right now. And um, next week you will just have um, a copy of the agreement, the eighteen um, eighty-two percent um, financial thing in the consent agenda for um, for that with our agreement with Windsor. And it has no end date so that we don't have to keep doing the, the agreement over. And for us, our days, we had to turn in already, even though it's not due till the end of September, the Bureau, because it's all new and they're trying to figure their way through this, um, we had to turn in our hours already for um, for early voting and um, I have them with me. We have, we have a combination of nine to, nine to fives, um, two nights and one early morning and then our Saturdays, Sundays are eight to four. So we have a combination and like I said, the city and Grand Ledge, we're all gonna use the same, right now, the same schedule. And then if different populations require different adjustments, then individuals are gonna bear off to what they need for their population, but for now, we're all gonna start on the same page. So, any questions?
Just love to hear the hours when you have, or the evening hours in particular.
Um, Wednesday and Thursday.
Wednesday, good, Wednesday and Thursday.
Wednesday and Thursday will be open till eight, noon to eight on Wednesdays and Thursdays.
Do you think you're gonna create a team to specialize in the early voting days and just have one team work all those days? Are you gonna rotate?
No, you have, yeah, I'm not having, I'm not gonna get somebody that's gonna work nine days straight. So we're focusing on um, trying to get APB workers to work two or three of the days and then the others, I don't care if they work only one day. My consistency needs to be with the electronic poll book people and the ballot handlers is our focus.
Yeah, Mary, and just so you know, and I'm sure you probably heard this too, but the legislature's really talked about November ninth being their last session day. And so that's likely when they would adjourn, signee die, they're normally off those next two weeks for the Thanksgiving holiday and.
We know that's what they're saying, but then the, the next, the next thing, when someone, a reporter asks them, they say, we're not leaving early.
Oh, I know. I know what you're saying publicly.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, I've heard that they, when they leave for Bambi, that they won't come back.
And the others?
You know, questions, thanks, Mary. Currently, you're up for a presentation.
I'll send you all the notes.
Erin, see what's practice. So I just have the um, this year twenty twenty-four budget presentation, so feel free to ask any questions. Already my third one, which is kind of crazy. Fantastic. Going fast. Uh, so this is just um, sort of high level, prepared in accordance with the Michigan Uniform Accounting and Budgeting Act. Um, obviously, oh, I guess I have to take up for a strategic plan, seeing, I don't have this so many times. Um, and then continuing high quality service of the residents and um, keeping programmatic funding and facility updates. So some of the general goals and priorities, capital infrastructure needs are well represented. Keeping excellent water and sewer services at affordable prices, funding long-term future liabilities. Keeping excellent water and sewer services at affordable prices, funding long-term future liabilities. Strategic plan and then um the goal of maintaining the fifty percent unassigned fund balance and general. So first is just a, a update I like to provide every year on our employee-related long-term liabilities. So didn't take as big of a hit as I was concerned about because of the market falling pretty dramatically in twenty twenty-two. Um, so our funded percentage just went from seventy-six to seventy-four percent in March, so not great, but not terrible. Um, and then our retiree healthcare stands at eighty-three point five. So both are very good, good conditions, certainly with retiree healthcare, that's um acceptable condition. We still have making full payments to both in the budget. Um, and we'll continue to do that. I would just point out that we're only required to make payments for normal costs of employees hired after June eighteenth of twenty eighteen. But we still make our actuarially determined contribution every year. And that includes the payments that we make for current retiring. This one is the slide set for Paris for me every year, so that's just showing the impact of the recession proposal. So you can see the two lines are getting increasingly far apart. So the red line would be what the taxable value would be if we just went off the assessed value. So you can see it does continue to climb.
Courtney, just a quick question related to this slide. Do you know the percent of properties that turn over annually roughly, or how much that changes? Because obviously when they're sold, they're triggering.
Right, because we don't have a milli, because we don't have heavily rollbacks typically, yes, we do see a lot of her going happening. So I'd have to come up with that, I don't have that in.
Curious what that kind of typically is, you know, we had a big housing, you know, there was. A lot of people were selling and buying recently, just.
Yeah, they had to like know that like over five years.
Yeah.
Courtney, on this slide, um is basically residential, that what this represents?
Um, yeah, cause I think that, well, I don't, I don't know that, I guess, off the top of my head. I mean, it's um, it's kind of everything because everything is capped at the rate of inflation of five percent, so.
Yeah, I think that sounds are full of that.
Sorry, yeah, I mean, it's the whole value, you know, what's causing the, whether the difference between assessed and taxable is more attributable to residential. Or commercial, I'm not sure of that. But the next slide is, I guess this next slide sort of shows. I mean, this is where your property is, so, you know, residential is our highest um taxable value, so. Chances are a majority of it is attributable to that. I did ask about that agriculture and that was just a reclassification of a property, it wasn't.
Oh, was it? Okay.
It wasn't anything, cause I was like, oh, I would ask about that.
Yeah.
It's, yeah, it was just a um land, a parcel adjacent to a house and so that it was everything's made agricultural, so. It looks like a big number. And you can see personal property obviously continues to fall as it came off because the small parcel infection grew. That will continue to drop, I imagine. Local operating villages, we did see an increase in ours because we're mostly an increase in ours due to the two villages that were adopted by electorate. But we're still lower than most ours than our surrounding communities.
You know, uh, you footnote this as us, you're answering, easily answering that showing their uh income tax. It would be interesting to know on a per capita uh. What the tax burden is, you know, for the Lansing resident, East Lansing versus these townships. Because that would factor in those uh that revenue industry. And um, I mean, it's not something you have to put together now, but it would be interesting to know.
It might be even in census state.
Yeah.
Well, they line item their income tax projection, so. Getting of a dollar.
In their budget and divided by. And this does just include one mill odd cent for the sheriff's observation bond, because we won't know what that is until hopefully the end of October. Just a general fund um revenue summary, so it's pretty steady um compared to last year. Not a lot of changes, a lot, well, I guess grants um would be the biggest one that fell. We won't have as much grant revenue, mostly that was because of the one point four million for the aerial truck that came to the state, so. Expenditure summary and we'll get into more detail on some of the different high points of this, but that's just kind of the whole thing spelled out. This is everything, this is operating capital, um the whole thing, so that's why the fire department went down with that because we're not buying one point six million dollar aerial truck last year. Fortunately. We better not have to buy that for a very long time.
Then why is the cemetery going up by a hundred percent?
We'll uh, we'll get to that. So the uh general fund fund balance, so it, I guess it's twenty-three slash twenty-four. So this is where we said it, we expect to sit at the end of twenty-three and then the twenty-four budgeted revenue over expense. So we're still doing well on assigned fund balance and not planning to touch the restricted one down. Some comments about the general fund, so we do have a little bit of unassigned fund balance, but that's because of projects. We'll cover those in a few slides. And we have about seven point nine months of reserves in unassigned fund balance. We have the five percent cost of living for non-unioned employees to match what we did in twenty twenty-two or twenty twenty-three. Four percent for the fire union, that was in their collective bargaining agreement. Our healthcare cost went up thirteen point five percent, which is not a surprise because it went up one percent last year. So you can't go up seven percent a year, it has to go up one percent and then up thirteen percent, so.
This is for the twenty-four.
Still less than I would have guessed.
Long last. Uh, but yeah, I, as soon as I saw it only went up one percent last year, it's okay, that's never gonna last. And then the contract with the Eaton County Sheriff, so it's kind of jumping ahead a little bit. Um, but I did change an ambulance fund to the public safety fund as opposed to creating two funds for our two special revenue villages. So we talked to the auditor and they felt like that was okay, as opposed to creating a whole new fund just for the public safety village. And they're all public safety related expense. So what I did was I took the share of the Eaton County Sheriff contract, it's in about that one point eight million dollar range, and I'm just gonna pay it out of that fund. So that did relieve that burden of that. Well, it's a little bit different. Couple notable things, obviously Mary just covered her department, so her department saw a large increase, but we're just getting ready for unknowns and early voting. And if we do, I did not budget, so we budgeted a fifty thousand dollar-ish reimbursement for the presidential primary. So we know we'll be getting that back. It doesn't reflect any reimbursement for the early voting, just unknown as to what that's gonna be. So that will show up as revenue if we do end up receiving it. We have flexibility to fill two additional firefighter positions. We know we have two retirements in twenty-four and three and twenty-five, so we're hoping to hire people in advance of those. So that they can be fully trained, authorized, everything ready to go for when those retirements occur. Also allows us the flexibility to add an additional position apart. One of the neat things we might be able to do with that is have a full-time person on the weekend. Or until five P M., just a little bit more flexibility with scheduling, because it'd be nice to be able to have a full-time person here on the weekend. Or at least Saturdays when we're busier. And we all know Banbury's one of all the parks has and I don't think it's a surprise. General fund capital items comes to uh trust, treasure, veto was pointing about the. Cemetery, so it's capital projects, hillside paving and the Delta Center North Entry retaining wall. So if you've been by there, that fence is precariously um placed. So it needs to be dug off there in the master plan that was done, I don't know exactly when a few years ago. They called for a second entrance and then the replacement of that wall, so. We'll be able to kick off that project. And then get repaved the hillside. So other things, um, a few of the projects we voted for fire, we did not, we're not able to do this year. So we're, we pushed those into an extra, that's the first story. The pumper tanker, which we ordered in twenty twenty-one, we think will be here in twenty twenty-four, Siders Cross. Couple new vehicles in the fire department, um, yeah, this is basically anything over fifty thousand dollars. Parks projects are the Sharp Park East West Path project, which is partially grant-funded and Hunter's Orchard paving. The path, they'll do the two that we hope to accomplish in twenty twenty-four. Nixon Road Bike Lanes, which got pushed by the road commission. And then the transition to B S and A Cloud, so for those of you probably most of you are aware that B S and A is like the main software provider for everything in the township. Financial, software, building, assessing. And so of course, like everything is moving to the cloud, so this would be that transition.
Are there any potential grants for any of these projects?
So we'll cover what, what we're planning to use ARPA. And then um Sharp Park and Hunter's Orchard both have grants associated with that.
And Nixon Road too.
Well, Nixon Road is mostly road commission funded, yeah, this is just our portion. So, you know, you could list tons of things in the, that's attached to a strategic goal, unfortunately. But these are just some of the high points of things, um, we didn't really talk about this continued sidewalk repairs and path maintenance, which we do in um. Quadrants every year. The bike lanes are communications, Delta Rocks. You know, we're still investing significantly in fire department capital, wastewater and Ultium infrastructure. That's a huge investment infrastructure. We also have the proactive succession planning, which is part of the infrastructure goals. So, yeah, there are lots of things you can tie to the goals, but these are just some of the high points. The Webster Road Bridge design is on here also, that's another grant-funded, um, that's a little bit more designed, so I didn't include in capital. But that's our participation with the bridge project, and which is grant-funded by the county. This is where the public safety fund appears, so you can see the difference in the budgeted revenue there. Um, last year that would have been closer to two point five million, um, three million. So all of our other funds, the capital project fund is where we store our money, so that's why there's quite a bit coming out of there. General debt fund is where the library, that is, we will have a new fund to track our unlimited general obligation bond. Uh, won't be solid.
Would you be going over what's, what's currently in our ARPA funds?
Yep.
Okay. Oh, here it is.
Oh, look at that, I didn't even know. Oh, so yeah, so this is our fund, um, so yeah, you can see by the year, which is the year that we used it. So the first year was peril supplements, this year the aerial truck. An ambulance, which we have actually received, okay, we have received an ambulance. The fire station projects, which will get pushed to twenty-four, they originally budgeted in twenty-three. The admin building improvements, which are gone-ish, the Waymaster vehicle, which we purchased in twenty-three, and then Delta Mills restroom. Which they're working on. So next year would be the pumper truck, which we hope to receive, the B S and A cloud, Sharp Heart renovations. And then an ambulance in twenty-five. So with this and with the adoption of this budget, we would technically have all of our funds appropriated, which was a requirement of revenue sharing. So I think it's a pretty good mix of different um uses, one-time uses, which is important. Because you don't wanna be setting yourself up by using one-time revenue for an ongoing expense, it really got us ahead in our fire apparatus. And then we have some parks, some general administration with the B S and A cloud and the admin building. So I think it turned out to be a pretty good spread. Future projects, so the Saint Joe path is one thing that's missing from this. We're hoping for sixty percent plants to be done here in the next few weeks, which will give us some cost estimates, there's two components to that. This is general fund would be the path, then the water main project, which is the larger part of the project. We're not gonna have cash flow on that and water bonds, it's gonna be too much for that, so we'll have to do a short-term bond for that. So different ways we can think about it, if we wanna just do a bond for the whole project and water pays some and general fund pays some, that's to be determined. So it will be really helpful when we get the cost estimate, very anxious for. We still have paving Hawk Meadow Trail on the books and that we decided we would push off. Potentially connect or to work on at the same time as the Webster Road Non-Motorized Path, might make sense to tie those two things together. The Mall Ivan Elmwood Connector, which will likely be twenty twenty-six now. And then continued implementation of the building study. The Webster Road Non-Motorized Path, we have a large um grant request and a tap grant request, so we haven't heard about that, but hopefully a lot of that will be funded.
So Courtney, basically what you're saying is these are all gonna be pushed back uh to twenty twenty-five, twenty-six?
Yeah, these are future projects, yeah.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm, except for the Saint Joe path, that's the one that really should be at twenty-four, but I just don't know what to put in. So I'm, I just didn't wanna forget to not be, I forgot about that.
And the building study, that would include the building on Elizabeth Street and other, other things that we've talked about.
So the fire projects all come from that building study, yeah. So we just try to take pieces of it and work on improving. Obviously getting some considerable, uh, moving forward on that with the elimination of the park storage building. And the addition of the park storage building and the new sheriff's observation. So just some of the other major funds, public safety fund like we talked about, so um you can see that the um revenue there is going to be um. Considerably more because that will have the um new miller in it. So battalion G vehicles, some computer replacements, the video telescopes and the striker equipment lease. You pay a hundred thousand up towards at least from this one. Typically, there was twenty-five firefighter paramedics funded in here and now it's twenty-three. So as you know, that revenue, we start to kind of outpace, we have to move employees back to the general fund, so we're starting to see that happen a little bit. But it's still, still in good shape. So our fund, uh, we continue to build upgrades to make that big bond payment twenty twenty-five. Still have projects we have to attend to though. But these are just a few replacement plate pickups, heat upgrades, U Q Vs and pumps. I think uh replacement excavator that's actually spread for the water department. General projects.
What was the rate increase for twenty twenty-three?
Nine.
Nine, and so twenty twenty-four will be nine again?
Yep. Think foreseeable future.
Changing.
Yeah, no, it's there and I'm comfortable to be in there, but it needs to higher. This doesn't take into account our reimbursable projects, the wastewater project and Ultium projects. This is just everything we're not getting reimbursed. The water funds, I just have a two percent increase there, we were able to keep that low because of Ultium. Rick has a few projects, painting the crates ground storage tank inside. We're working on this data project. That services dropped, so that used to be about nine hundred thousand, now it's down to five hundred thousand for over two years. And then all our fund that will be off, except for the Saint Joe Water Main. That we expect to come on, so it's a good time to have to do that.
Is Rick commissioning some painters to come in and do something really funky?
Yeah, on the inside is not quite as fun. Maybe some cathodic protection in that.
Courtney, what do we expect to start paying that service on the S R?
Twenty twenty-five.
Twenty twenty-five.
We pay interest on principal, yes, yeah.
So it'll show up next year.
Yeah, that will definitely be very obvious.
Yeah, it'll be stark.
Yeah. Yes, rip the bandaid off. That concludes the formal presentation. So happy to answer your questions or. Go through anything else.
Books have questions, remember?
Just a question, um, and it relates to just the storm that we experienced and many costs associated with, associated with that. Do we need to do anything in twenty twenty-four to prepare for something like that to happen again? I don't know if we, what cost we incurred because of all the storms.
We had to submit an estimate to state emergency management because they were trying to put together everybody's estimate to try to prove to the federal government that they should help us fund it. So I don't know where any of that, I think we reached that threshold looking at on aggregate, but we'll see what happens. Uh, we had, we had estimated probably around maybe two hundred thousand-ish in cost, but that is a very big estimate. Because we don't know about the brush removal, so we're working on that, but until that's done, so we looked at overtime diesel. I did see something today from like a portico. Did you have a port of hot delivered? Yeah, so I, I've made sure to put that aside. I caught that. Um. So yeah, so we are tracking all of that, but that will probably be a twenty twenty three issue more than a twenty four. And I don't know, I mean, I think that's why we keep reserves, right? So it's a great example of why it's important to have it because we really didn't have to struggle to fund that site or worry about it, right? We, we can support what the residents need, so I think we're in good shape to handle our activities. And if we can get some of it back, great, we can, we'll, yeah, we'll be okay.
Brian, are we paying um Hammond by the cubic yard or what is, is that what it is?
Yeah. Yeah, it's kind of come back a little bit less than what we thought. They really pack it down, I guess. But uh, I mean, obviously it's still, every train they take out of there, it's refilled. So I think that the last estimate we were at was like twenty three thousand or something like that. So that was maybe a week or so ago, but.
And we had estimated like a hundred, over a hundred.
Wow, that we'd pay way more in thirteen. But it was hauled along with a greater distance where.
And it's nice that we use them a lot. I mean, yeah, it was seventy or seventy two thousand in thirteen.
I imagine we'll, I imagine we'll get there, but it's.
Yeah, we don't have the bills yet. The work's not been done for those huge trees and the two cemeteries.
And we put an estimate for that as well.
Massive trees that we need help with.
I think we're just cemetery debris removals.
Other questions, comments? No, a lot of this is, I think, a continuation of multiple projects. And then of course, then we got the big, the big two that, you know, one was thrown at us with uh one battery plant. And then we have our water resource recovery. So really kind of this continuation. I think uh we have a, a good focus on that. I think our budget reflects that, so. I wish we could do more, but there's only so much that we can physically do. And I think we're using the resources to our best of our ability.
Courtney, you have a question, and maybe Sarah and I just missed it and not flagged. Um, but the township received a award, a state award of ten million for wastewater.
Yeah.
Is, is that reflected anywhere in the budget and those funds are?
No, because I would consider that like an in and out, like the wastewater plant. So this I try to kind of keep on like a cash, what we're actually going to spend. That's going to impact us on that. We'll get reimbursed. So I kind of treat it like the wastewater plant Ultium where it's not in here, but it would be something. Obviously borders will hold on it and do everything, but yeah, that's not reflected in there.
Okay.
Because it should be in and out.
Into that point, I'm sorry.
So maybe I misunderstood because I thought that ten million was going to be targeted for some of our system improvements that are needed on the west side that are being, you know, developments hindered by.
Yeah, it's a Willow, of course.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, so now with our whole plant.
No, no, I just mean I'm treating it the same way, which is kind of outside of the budget because it's a pass through.
Okay. So it's not reflected in projects, but it won't come up.
Okay, yes.
Courtney, was that ten million? Was that just a line item? Was there uh other play associated with that?
It was like a sentence.
A line is what?
It was a line, I know. It was, it was.
Okay, so, so there's really no direction as to what we apply that to, whether it's for Willow or whether it's just for debt service?
No, it is for, um, I don't know. Do you remember what exactly it said? It said sewer system improve.
Yeah, it said sewer system improvements, but.
But it related to housing though, that's the.
Well, no, the paperwork I submitted was just for, for West Willow sewer improvement. Um, so, but I, I have not seen the award from the state yet.
Or grant agreement.
The grant agreement yet. Um, but in the budget, it was listed as just sewer. Yeah, sewer improvements. Um, I know it keeps getting talked about differently, but the intent is for the West Willow lift station. Or that's, sorry, I just, I just blew it through for the forest name.
But I think.
Barring, barring any, because we have not done design on that. So unless, you know, at this point, that was our best estimate on that project. And, and moving forward, if something which the board approved moving forward with the, you know, design or layout last time, so if there is something that, you know, comes up, say it can't be put in the same location or we run into some problems, we may have to adjust on that to, you know, help serve that capacity, but at this point, it's still for the forest name.
Okay.
But it is for the purpose of meeting housing needs.
Correct.
But it was per our submission for the grant. It wasn't necessarily earmarked in statute. The budget at all. For that, it's only based on what we applied for. Right?
Correct.
Okay. Questions, comments?
Great. Here's another question on the ARPA funds. If, if it's obligated, but it doesn't get used, do we lose? Do we lose the funds or can we still?
Not until twenty twenty six.
Right, well, let's say if something happens, we don't have it by twenty twenty six. Do we, if, if it's obligated and it's not used, is it just lost or we just?
I mean, I suppose they would try, I mean, they could try to, so like we have it.
Right.
We, we have it in our.
So does that, yeah.
But yeah, I mean, technically they could, yes, take it back if we did not actually spend it by the end of twenty six. You have to obligate it by the end of twenty four. The state legislature said they wanted us obligating it by the end of twenty three, so that's why we're including it all in the budget. But yes, the goal would be to, and, and we would be able to find.
Right.
Yeah, no, fortunately that ambulance will be really the thing, the last thing that we use it for. Thank you.
Courtney, one other question. Um, what was, I know there was increases in revenue sharing. How, what was the impact for the township?
Yeah, they, they said it was, so basically went from like three point five to three point seven. So it's, I forget what the percentage was off the top of my head, but we did just see of something increase from there, probably about two hundred thousand. And we do get a little bit of local community stabilization for the first time ever, so that's kind of for the personal property reimbursement, when we started getting small checks.
Brian, I have a question that I failed to ask you during the report. Um. There was some controversy about the road commission redoing Old Lansing Road, which they did because it was a bunch of it was fairly new. But they did not put bike lanes back.
Courtney, they will be putting the bike lane stickers back. So they, they did not redo the road. They put on a specialized um chip seal. So part of their new strategy to try to prevent uh good roads from, you know, deteriorating, so they have uh so they'll be doing that with several roads, but they will be putting those back. Uh, they just need a um uh, they, they need a special contractor, I believe, to, to do those.
Ken, I, I don't know if this is applicable here, but will there be a budget for the C I A or is that a different time? I can't remember.
Yeah, I, I guess I could have, yeah, I could have made a slide. It is in the packet, um, or in what you, it's paid, I don't know. It's pretty minor.
I'm not going to give a chance to see.
Yes, it's easy to miss because it's very short. All they really have money for is reimbursing us for costs that we've incurred and that's some.
Page fifty out of fifty six.
Yeah, and then some um consultant work. So they expect to get about two hundred twenty four thousand. They've budgeted to spend about eighty. So they're kind of in a savings mode. But yeah, their budget has been adopted by the board.
Part of that eighty was paid back still for money that's been spent.
Yeah, that's it. Yeah.
So the budget was adopted by the C I A, but do we as a board have to approve it or?
Yes.
That would be included.
That's what, so this, we need to make sure that we know that we're approving this one as well.
Yeah.
Just since Mary asked about pavement markings too, just to um update the board. Cause I know we, we've had some complaints on the skip lines at Elmwood and M forty three. Um, which were put in in twenty nineteen uh at our request. So I asked, requested for those to be repainted or asked when they would have that. So there's somehow their specialized pavement marking did statewide came in super high, so they took that out of their plan. So I'm not, deny him, does not have money to redo special pavement markings. Um, you only will do the, the regular ones. So they're hoping next year that they will have funds to do that. Um, so that was just a email I received the other day. And this is the time of year where they actually need it, you know. Yeah, we've had a couple people come in and not, you know, just not happy with going southbound there. So it just gets a little confusing, and I think those lines weren't, weren't very well.
Yeah, it gets very dicey there, turning left there. Seeing the lanes.
I did see the street sweeper the other day.
So did we.
He wasn't sweeping, he was just sitting there.
We follow canal.
Yeah.
I saw it going down Saint Joe, I think Saint Joe, but uh the problem that I saw though is that there's so much debris from the storm. It was not plucked in at all. It was going over and it was leaving, there's sticks and stuff that the bike people are going to really hate, the bike lanes.
Yeah, yeah. And that's another thing with the markets, you know, it's not just the bike lane markets, but it's, it's the left turn lane. All that stuff that seems like the road commission ignores, all they're doing is they're striding. You know, they're doing their double yellow lines or strike yellow line and then their outside border. They, they just ignore all the other uh traffic control devices that are painted on.
Don't we put fog lines in a lot of places now?
Yeah, so I mean, as far as zebra stripes, they ignore those, the whole thing.
Evidently paving striking is, or paving, pavement striping is getting caught up in this escalation of costs. Sheep eats everything else.
Any other budget questions?
No, I have a question, I have a follow-up question.
Brian. Did you have a budget or?
No, not budget.
Okay, so I guess we moved on to the budget now.
Thank you, Courtney. Is it, am I up? Okay, I, I did have a question for Brian though, so I don't know. I, it's more for blowing comments.
Oh, I, I have a couple specific questions.
Well, go ahead.
Um, there's a State Journal article about uh the dam failures the other day. What was it?
I, I do. You know how much this costs a year?
I use.
It's almost like a thousand dollars.
Anyway, it was Wednesday and uh they talked about failing dams and they cite Delta Township. As uh, we have three, I don't know if they're called dams, but uh it's called Structure A and Structure B. And they're both high risk and satisfactory edition. They were built in two thousand eight. Another one in Kierri Creek called Structure F, built in two thousand eight, is low risk and satisfactory. I didn't think we had any water retention things along Kierri Creek. Uh, do you have any clue of what they're talking about?
Right, that's.
But we have the south of four, uh, four ninety six, or the Kierri Creek, they have a retention base in there for stormwater, you know, they just, they, they back that up and release.
So that'd be one out of the three, maybe.
Yeah, that's the one I know of.
Okay, well, I, I don't know. I was just dumbfounded by that, so I just.
Well, I didn't read the article. Had any dams.
I have a copy of this, so you can, I'll get it to you so that you can follow up with it.
I appreciate the art.
Cause I got two phone calls.
Well, some of this paper, I guess.
I just pointed out that they were not at risk, that they're satisfactory, so just because the headline talks about failure doesn't mean everybody in the article is a failure.
No, I, that, that's clear in that, but I didn't know we had any facilities at all.
Thanks for.
I had to reassure two residents that failure and.
And I'll come to that too, uh, because I had a citizen claim along our, our east west pathway. And the complaint is that a lot of dog owners, it seems, are not picking up after their dogs. And I don't know if there's much we can do about it, but I still bring it up. I know we have the bag disposal. Maybe we need a couple more signs, you know, remind people, but you know, it is a very hard thing, of course, so I told them that. And the last question I have is, a couple meetings ago, we approved um, um, a request to O R O X some to accommodate their food truck. And we approved that, but I had brought up the fact that, that O R O X really is this remiss in not having pedestrian sidewalk access to their property. And you said you were going to contact them and talk to them about it. And I know we've had our, our storm and all those things. Have you in fact had a chance to follow up with them at all?
I, I have not personally. I know Gary Bozick did talk to them, but I did not get the nature of the.
Can we get a reporter on that then or?
I know it's something to do with the right of way, that they gave up right away when they changed this whole intersection. And I think it was an arrangement they made with the M dot with that, that they would not be required because they gave up so much right of way.
Well, it's not.
So I'm not arguing with you. I'm just saying I, I heard Gary, Gary was trying to explain it to me and I could have it wrong, but that's the.
I, I know that, and I, I understand that. My issue is that we, as a township, have been over backwards from O R O X. And a number of occasions with their ongoing additions, for example. And yet they seem to ignore, even though it's on their personal property, of just extending the sidewalk into their own parking lot to facilitate pedestrian traffic into locations. And I, I just think it's short sighted. So I understand what you're saying, Mary, but it really has to do with their, their goodwill. And I, I think we should, we should really go bring it to attention.
It would be interesting to hear, have Gary explain it because it had something to do with they would have to give up so many parking places. It's very convoluted because they took all of the right of way.
The only thing I could see is they have to give up two parking spaces, but.
Don't they have to give it up the whole length?
No.
Of the west side.
No, they would start using their parking lot. They'd walk into the parking lot. So you couldn't have a car with a sidewalk going with a car right there. They would just have that as the pedestrian entrance to their parking lot. That's what they would have to do, you know. Anyway, if we could follow up on that, that's what I wanted to know. That's all we have. So. Any other issues? Yeah, we see no further business.
Wait, wait, wait. I didn't have a question for Brian. I just wanted to bring up, but maybe direct it to staff, permanent staff, but to the board as well. I just want to flag there are a number of bills, I think, of great interest to the township that are being taken up and on the agenda, legislature's agenda for action this fall that um we might want to consider engaging on. One, and there's a hearing scheduled on Wednesday on the revenue sharing trust fund bills. It's been a huge effort that M M L has led. They've already had a hearing. The bills are expected to be reported, so these are moving. Great news, very exciting. Um, there are a few other bills that, you know, I don't know where the township, how much the township may or may not want to engage, but just want to share, um, in that same hearing, there are bills on the um disabled veterans tax credit, changing that from a property tax credit. Burden on local governments to, you know, a liability on local governments. Transitioning that to a state income tax credit, so it shift that liability to the state. So another kind of policy, I think, of interest to the township. There's also going to be a lot of work done on um energy related work. But part of that, a bill in the House deals with citing of um renewable and largely so, you know, more solar on projects, but renewable projects that would take that from local to state citing. There are some things being worked out on there, some thresholds on the size of those, but. things being worked out on there, some thresholds on the size of those, but you know, heavy impacts as well. So um, there are a number of others. I can kind of pull together a list if it's helpful, but there's a lot that's like on the legislature's um agenda as priorities for this fall that have an impact, so just want to make the board aware and staff and that as well, that they should be of interest. And a whole lot of economic development function. Um, so, um.
I think that's why we stay engaged in the township association and the M M L so that they can stay on top of that, take positions that would, you know, you know, impact, you know, the local governments and stuff, so we tend to file the lead up that, so.
It's one of the work to do. There was a lot happening. Thank you.
Anything else?
Okay, well, we are adjourned then.